I haven't gotten the registration. We're not gonna get it tonight. They're not gonna be, they're not gonna be fine tomorrow. They're gonna put it together and then they'll have to, it's gonna be 30 days for us to process it. Close our numbers for memberships. He said up and down.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
There we go. Thank you. So a couple of things before Doug calls the meeting to order and they start taping. We're still having some issues with the iPad and Roll Call Pro.
Ever, ever.
Ever, never, ever.
Now you didn't come on to amend.
Ever, never, ever, ever, never. If there is an amendment that comes, I can add that in manually, and I would prefer to add it manually instead of having the computer screen blow up because everybody wants to amend it at the same time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We come together today to serve the people of Wood County. Let us open our hearts and keep in mind the needs of all our constituents. In a world so divided by political affiliation, race, class, and religion, may our actions today be guided through respect, empathy, and love. May we give our thanks to all the employees of the county for everything they do and for all the sacrifices they make on our behalf, especially the men and women of the Sheriff's Department as they deal after the events of last week. Amen.
I'm glad to meet you. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Supervisor Han. Reading all the previous minutes.
You guys suck at this. It's on the screen. It's advanced in your Roll Call Pro. So open up your app.
Yeah, the even ad.
You're supposed to put it on the screen.
It is, soon as you open the Roll Call Pro app. There we go, you have a motion and a second. There it is.
Still connecting.
Still connecting.
Don't want to hit the amend button.
We have three motions and a second on the minimum last month's meeting. Any discussion, additions, or subtracts in front of the minutes? See none? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Thank you. Excusals, today we have none. Resignations, we have none. Appointments, CDVG Housing Committee, two-year term, Supervisor Han. CDVG Housing Committee, one-year term, Supervisor Bry.
Public comment.
Supervisor Bry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to be excused at 10:45 to 10:15.
No problem. Thank you. Back to the appointments. Supervisor Bry, one-year term to the CDVG Housing Committee. Wildlife Area Advisory Committee, three-year term, Scott McCauley, Mike Whitley, Leo Kadrowski. Renewable and Sustainable Committee, term ends in April of 2020. Supervisors Han and Light. I would entertain a motion to approve those appointments. Oh, I'm sorry. I can still see that.
Sure.
We have a motion and second to approve those appointments. Is there any discussion concerning those appointments? See none, all in favor of those appointments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Thank you. Public comment. And anybody at this time that wishes to make public comments? Michelle, please come forward. I think you might have to turn the mic on.
Hello. Oh, good morning.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
Yes. Michelle Boricki, 11096 Milk Creek Drive, Marshville, Wisconsin, and also your campus executive at UW Stevens Point at Marshville. I wanted to come over today and personally invite all of you and anybody else who might want to send as representatives if you cannot be there. Tomorrow at the campus in Marshville, we have representatives from the North Star Analytics. If you remember when our Chancellor Bernie Patterson was here, we talked about the economic impact survey that was being done, where it's been completed. And as he mentioned, every dollar of your investment to our university gives back to our community and Wood County at $17. So that's a good investment, and you can learn more tomorrow, Wednesday at 1 o'clock at the campus. We'll have some desserts and some refreshments, and you can hear more about the details of that. What does that mean in economic development, and what is it that we give back to the community? So I invite all of you, and again, if you can't be there, don't stress about it. We will have hard copies and electronic copies afterwards as well. So I mean, hope to see you there, and I'll be providing the desserts, store-bought, of course. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else that would just make public comments at this time? Vice Chair, over.
So I'm rising today to honor one of our long-term public members. You know that we do resolutions for county board supervisors who die, but we don't really have a process in place to honor those who have served as public members on our various committees. So some of you all may know that Bonnie Jakes died on May the 29th. She was a long-term member of Unified Services, which the committee was rolled into the Health and Human Services Committee when we organized county government in 2008. So I'm thankful to Trent for digging through the archives to find out exactly how long she served. She was appointed as a public member to the Unified Services Board in April of 1991, and continued to serve on that Unified Services Board until March of 2008, when that committee was rolled into the Health and Human Services Committee. And then she served from April 2008 on the Health and Human Services Committee until April of 2015, when her health prevented her from being appointed again. So I just want to, on behalf of the county, thank her family for allowing her to serve those many years. She was the public member who represented by state statute an individual that has a family member that receives services from the Unified Services, and so she was very active in having a dance for the special needs community in Marshfield for years and years. And I used to go to that and just have a ball because it was just a lot of fun to be with that population, and Bonnie was very active in that. And so I just wanted to acknowledge her and to let you all know that she certainly was a very long-term advocate for the services that are now provided by our combined Human Services Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Chairman. So I did post on behalf of the Wood County Board of Supervisors and then as chair of the Health and Human Services, our condolences on the page in the funeral home. But because we have a resolution that we can send to the family after this observance at the county board meeting, I will notify the family that we had this memorial and let them know that we honored Bonnie Jakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no acknowledgements or recognitions this morning. I have been told that our special order of business has been canceled for today, so that will get us into the packet. Referrals for June, we have none. Pages 8 through 15, we have Executive Committee minutes. Wellness Board on pages 16 and 17. Administrative Coordinator Report on page 18. County Clerk, page 19. Finance Director, 20 through 27. Human Resources, pages 28 through 31. IT, 32 through 35. Aminist Department, page 36. Treasurer, 37. Which brings us to our first resolution brought by the Executive Committee, and I will ask clerk to read that.
This will be Resolution 19-6-1. Initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation promissory notes in an amount not to exceed $6 million for highway projects and capital improvement projects. Fiscal note, proceeds from general obligation promissory notes not to exceed $6 million designated to highway projects for $2.3 million and capital improvement for $3.7 million.
Do you entertain a motion? Do you have a motion and second on the resolution? Is there any discussion concerning the resolution? Supervisor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the $3.7 million in capital improvements? It's just, it, I can, you know, the highway projects, we've been doing back and forth, but then all of a sudden, now $3.7 million? It was supposed to be a maximum of four a year, and now it's up to three, to six.
Vice Chair, over.
Thank you, and I was gonna rise to talk about that because you're right, that just is a number out there, and people are gonna say, oh my gosh, we're borrowing $6 million. You know, because of the way the borrowing process goes, this resolution has to be passed so that we can move forward with the borrowing, but all those capital improvement projects are still under discussion by the Executive Committee. So you notice that the resolution says not to exceed $6 million. So if those CIPs are whittled down and prioritized by both the committees in which those CIPs are, and then the Executive Committee looks at the big picture with, well, what does that do to debt? What does that do to the tax increase and all of that? So that $3.7 is just out there, not to exceed. I expect that not to be as much as we talk about what projects need to be prioritized. So you will see what comprises that $3.7 if indeed it goes up to that as we move through the budget process, but this resolution has to be put forth so that we have the ability to bond as we move in the budget process. So I guess that's as good an explanation as we can give now because we don't really have the specifics of what the CIP borrowing is going to be at this time.
Supervisor Zerfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, may I address the Vice Chair, please?
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, I'm just rising, how firm is $2.3 million for the Highway Department? In other words, what after the Executive Committee studies says, oops, we need more than $3.7 for our projects, so we take it away from the highway? Is that $2.3 for Highway firm?
I think everything is under consideration right now. In fact, the Executive Committee is meeting on Thursday. All these numbers are probably in flux. I think what Ms. Supervisor Hamilton was implying, and I want to address it, is that we're borrowing for capital improvements, and such is the case with levy limits, we do not have, we cannot raise the money to do CIP. That doesn't mean we don't want to do IC, we don't want to do CIP or shouldn't do CIP. We could say, we don't want to do any CIP and borrow for Highway at $2.3 and let the county fall apart in every other aspect. We chose not to do that. Our only option because of levy limits and our ability to raise tax money is to bond for it. And so it's become sadly enough a standard procedure for most counties to borrow at this time until things get changed for us as far as revenue streams. And, but all of numbers, we certainly, as Executive Committee, and I risk making for the Executive Committee, but I think that I, the consensus is that we're not gonna borrow for six, we're not gonna bond for $6 million. We want to be really close to $6 million, but we need to have that cap in place so that the bonding process can begin and not to exceed that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you?
Supervisor Clendini, did you have something?
Good thing. It's already in the process and we're going, it looks like the Parks Department has lowered it down already to a $5 million project, so it's, it's on working. You're not gonna know what the end is, but I support, and that's why I put the resolution forward.
That's right. All the departments are working. We realize that $6 million is probably not a good figure for us, that we're probably somewhere around five or south of five, hopefully, and so those projects have to be prioritized, and that's what we're, the Executive Committee is in the process of doing. Vice Chair, over.
So I just want to follow up on that because, you know, as operational costs increase in our county, we want to give our employees raises. We want to do things that increase our operational cost. We cannot borrow for operational costs. We can only borrow for our CIPs. And so it is frustrating when we're held to, you know, the amount of construction and things like that because we have to do the operational things, but the operational costs then leave us no money to do CIPs. We want to take care of our buildings. We have a lot invested in our buildings. We want to make sure that we upgrade things and that we renovate and that we do things that are going to maintain the credibility of what we do in this county. And so that's why we've had to go. I mean, when I got on the board in 2000, there wasn't any borrowing even done. We were paying cash for stuff, and we didn't have a very wise use of bonding. And I'm glad to see that over the years, we have embraced the fact that there are things that we need to borrow for and spread those projects over a period of time where future taxpayers then invest in helping to pay for those investments that we do. So, oh my gosh, so as operational costs go up, we're gonna have to borrow for CIPs and we're gonna have to take care of our buildings. That's just my two cents.
Supervisor, act back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been going through this for years. Was there ever a attempt that we were asked to people on a voting on a referendum if we could borrow some money rather than going through the borrowing? We could feel a better if they said, yes, who's gonna raise our taxes to make these improvements? By the time we're gonna have to take it from them anyway, and they say, no, well, we have a reason to borrow them, but we never broke our public that we need more money. We just go to borrow and roll all the time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Clendini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a little bit of a reiteration. Maybe we can pass a little bit of light on this. Answer a couple of questions. First of all, I've had some conversation with some of those members of the Executive Committee, and I know their intention is to keep that borrowing level at $5 million or under. That's the intent because that's an amount we can repay. So when we accumulate that, we also have to realize that there is a debt service that we have to be able to handle. I know they all have that in mind when they're looking at that. To answer Supervisor Zerfus' question, if I can, we had a meeting yesterday with the Herb Committee where we were pretty firm on where we wanted to be on that highway bonding, and that was a large compromise from the construction schedule that we had had, which was far in excess of $3 million. But a conversation with the Highway Commissioner and the committee, we thought we could probably get a schedule that would maintain our roads if we were able to do that number around $2.3 million. So I get that, you're in flux. I think the one question that might not have been answered, maybe a member of the Executive Committee or Chair or Vice Chair could answer, there are a couple of big items that comprise that other $3.7. One of them is IT infrastructure, which is huge for both the fact that we have equipment that's aging out, but we also have a security issue that we have to deal with. Cybersecurity is one of the big things out there that can cost us millions in one, one single instance. So if, there might be a couple of those that you might be able to answer that, catch a couple of those big items. You know, typically those are Edgewater or Anan or something going with. Generally speaking, though, I'm hoping to keep it under $5 million. The reason for the six is to give a little bit of leeway, and I will support that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on that? See none? Please vote. And that resolution passes again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Takes us to our second resolution on page 39, also brought by the Executive Committee, and I will ask for a read there as well.
This will be Resolution 19-6-2. To amend the 2019 budget to include monies that were amended in Resolution 19-5-6 from the wrong function for the market review wage adjustments. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The monies were amended for the wrong function in Resolution 19-5-6, in total, $18,739.
Do you entertain a motion? Well, yeah. Attention on. We have a motion and second on the resolution, on the motion regarding resolution. Is there any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? See none? Please vote. And that, that, that motion passes again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Third and fourth resolutions, I believe, we can tape together on page 40, also brought by the Executive Committee. Without objection, we will take those together. See none? I would ask for a read there.
This will be Resolution 19-6-4. To accept the offer of sale of tax-deed property. Fiscal note, the offered amount of $111,859 minus real estate taxes, publication fees, tax deed fees, and special charges nets a gain of $75,869.66. On page 45 will become Resolution 19-6-5. No? Big ones. I missed one here. I missed 19-6-3, which is on page 40. To accept the offer of sale of tax-deed property. It's stuck to the page. Fiscal note, offer at amount of $4,200 minus real estate taxes, tax deed expense, and special charges nets a gain of $535.86.
Do we have a motion and second? Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion regarding these resolutions? Any discussion? See none? Please vote. And that resolution passes again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That takes us to page 45, and the fifth resolution, also brought by Executive, and I would ask clerk to read that.
And this will become Resolution 19-6-5. To approve the policies contained in the revised Wood County Employee Policy Handbook, effective July 1, 2019, superseding all previous policies contained therein. Fiscal note, none. Printing of the handbooks is budgeted for in the Human Resources 2019 budget.
We have a motion and second on the motion, I don't know, or on the resolution. Is there any discussion concerning that resolution? See none? Please vote. And that resolution passes again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Pages 48 through 99 are that revised employee handbook. Pages 103 to 106, we have Health Department. Human Services on pages 107 through 113. County Veteran Service Officer, 114 and 115. Public Safety, 116 through 125. Supervisor Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 121, I saw that there was a change in the job description, and I did not remember that a department had been, or a change in the function had been made to have the Communications Coordinator no longer report to Emergency Management, which maybe was partially my fault. So in doing some research, I looked in December of last year, by a motion, it was reorganized. I think that best practice is when you reorganize something, to do it by resolution. I think it's cleaner. In past practice with Edgewater, when Edgewater was reorganized, we did that by resolution. So I would like to make a motion to refer this back to Public Safety Committee to have an actual resolution to reorganize the Communications and Cyber Department to be a standalone department. Thank you.
I will second the motion.
Okay. We have a, and correct me if I'm wrong in paraphrasing, this, Vice Chair. We have a motion and second to send back to me the, what, the organization?
I don't know. I love Asia. So.
I'm sorry. Vice Chair.
I would say, I mean, we can call it what you want, but reorganization, I think, is a proper word because the position reported to Emergency Management, it's now being reorganized on the org chart to reports of public safety. If you want to use another word, I'm not gonna die on that hill, but I do think it is appropriate use.
Okay, so the motion would state, take back to me your reorganization for the Communications position. Okay. Is there any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? See none? I'm ready. Please vote. And that motion passes 15 to four. No, 15 to four. 15 to four. Okay. And that motion passes 15 to four. The advised desk, we will be taking that back to the board. Public Safety, again, 116 to 125. Public Safety, again, 116 through 125. Civil Service, 126 through 129. Coroner's Report on Page 130. Domain Officer, pages 131 through 134. Sheriff's Rescue, pages 135 through 159. Sheriff's Department, pages 160 through 185. SEED, 186 through 199. Golden Sands, our C and D, pages 200 through 211. Land and Water Conservation, 212. I'm sorry, Supervisor Lightman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we go back to page 194 for just a second? I rise to acknowledge one of our Health Department employees, our Environmental Health Officer. Over the course of the last several months, I've listened to Nancy Engels speak, first of all, down at the Land and Water Conservation Conference in Lake Geneva, that was in February. And then last Wednesday, she represented Wood County at Speaker Ross's Groundwater Quality Task Force in Austin. Nancy does just a wonderful job of representing our county and its citizens. She speaks from the heart, she's very analytical, she's got all her facts straight. We had a really good representation from Wood County at Austin. One of the legislators commented what a wonderful job Nancy did. So I just wanted to go on record, recognizing how she serves us so very well in Wood County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, our Golden Sands, our C and D, pages 200 through 211. Land and Water Conservation, 212 through 215. Planning and zoning, pages 216 through 235. UW Extension, 236 through 240. I'm going to call this economic development. This is the breakout of the SEED Committee's economic development portion. I don't know how you like it. I like it. There's a lot going on there, and it's very well captured there. There's quite a bit going on, it's all there. I think it's very interesting. I hope everyone's following that. We're doing some good stuff there, and I think I look forward to a lot more. We should have some news soon. That will be exciting for everyone. So that is pages 241 through 282. And congratulations to SEED Committee for taking that on, doing such a great job. I think they're handling that portion of their agendas very well. J and L on 283 through 295. Child Support, 295. Court of Counsel, 296. Very unusual for Peter to have one page. Register of Deeds on page 297. Which brings us to our sixth resolution brought by J and L Committee, and I would ask for a read back.
This will be Resolution 19-6-6. To obtain consent of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to create a Criminal Justice Department and hire a justice coordinator to oversee the current Wood County Drug Court, as well as research and define other diversion courts that would benefit Wood County residents by focusing on the importance of treatment and reduction of recidivism. Fiscal note: None in 2019. The department and position would be created and budgeted for commencing January 1, 2020.
Sir, second. We have a second. We have a motion in second and is there any discussion regarding the resolution? Supervisor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to a later date for more information.
I will second that.
We have a motion on the floor and seconded to, are you doing that correctly? We have a motion on the floor and seconded to postpone this resolution to a later date. Is there any discussion on that motion? Vice Chair Oger.
So I'm standing to support the amendment, and I was going to say this. You know, this is an example of how we're committing ourselves to a position without knowing the full budgetary implications and--
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just procedurally--
I can't speak to an amendment?
It's not an amendment, though. You made a motion to--
Oh, table it. Okay.
Just procedurally, I just, sorry about that.
She can speak to the motion.
But you have a presidential motion to--
Okay, so we will not, we cannot speak to the motion to postpone. So, all in favor of bringing this by voice vote with our objection, or any objection to voice vote. All in favor of the motion to postpone indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All say no? Thank you, and that resolution will be postponed. That takes us to page 299.
So I have a question procedurally.
Vice Chair Oger.
So, thank you. So, Mr. Parliamentarian, if the motion to postpone this to another time, there's no date on that then, so what does that do with bringing this back? I mean, is it just, does that kill the resolution because you didn't put a time specific on that motion?
Realistically, the motion should have been ruled for, you know, to a specific time, definitely, or indefinitely, but I think I need it just to where they were going. I think they, there was a special order of business that had been scheduled that had been postponed, and I think they wanted to make sure that they had all information available to all supervisors before that. So you're correct in the exact wording, it should have been a little different, but I think the intent was understood.
Technically, it was killed. It should have been boarding the table to a specific date.
To postpone.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, postpone. Okay, we are on page 299 with our seventh resolution brought by J and L, and I would ask for a read back.
This will be Resolution 19-6-7. To encourage Wisconsin County's Association, the state legislature, and the governor to support Medicaid expansion in Wisconsin for the benefit of Wood County residents and residents throughout the state. Fiscal note: Unknown cost savings to the county by the state's acceptance of federal dollars to assist residents of the county and alleviating some of the myriad financial consequences to the county and having certain of its residents receiving this higher level of assistance.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding that resolution? Any discussion? Vice Chair Oger.
So I'll go first. I will be opposing this resolution, and I've got a lot of stuff here, but I'm going to encapsulate it. So I found two articles, one in the Investors Business Daily and one in Forbes Magazine. I'll just give you the title of these two articles. The first one is from August the 4th, 2017, called Medicaid Expansion Was and Is a Bad Mistake. It went through the reasons that the states that even accepted this money initially are now in trouble budgetarily. I'm just going to run some bullet points down from reading this. They talked about free money and how free money, nothing is free. I know it's politically advantageous to talk about this, but this is what this article said. It reduces enrollees' access to care. It returns the waiting lists that we had years ago that Governor Walker worked really hard to get rid of. It increases spending with no significant improvement in measured health outcomes. Oregon has spent $545 billion since 2013, and they have had no significant improvement in measured health outcomes. It does not produce timely care. It does not lead to the care needed to protect the health of the most vulnerable. And this article said it is a failed program that is projected to consume $7 trillion of taxpayer money over the next 10 years. Prevents charity care, which provides high-quality care. It undermines private insurance options. The second article I found is from Forbes Magazine in December of 2012.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I remember at one time, we were told by the chair, you cannot read articles, these have to be your own notes. And I think reading other people's article on this issue is not providing whatever constituency thinks. It's what that article--
Well, I'm reading--
I'm telling you, I think it's a point of order.
That's fine. I just would like to give you the title of that second. It's called Seven Reasons That States Should Not Say, They Should Say No to Medicaid Expansion. I asked you to read those articles.
Supervisor Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Either the chair, or if the chair wishes, the body has to rule on the point of order. I do believe I'm right on that.
The chair can vote.
The chair can vote.
Any other discussion on the resolution? Any other-- Supervisor Plomo.
I'll digress here for a minute. I don't want to reiterate everything Don has said, or Supervisor Rosa said, but way, way back, 100 years ago, I ran for junior high student council president, a pretty big junior high. My campaign was based on free candy, free ice cream at lunch, and Coca-Cola in every drinking fountain. And what Supervisor Rosa said is true, is nothing's free, and I'm still to this day trying to pay that debt. I have people that see me on the street and go, what about that Coke? What about that ice cream? And they do catch me in my hometown. I just got back from a conference out in Spokane, and I can tell you, I talked to a number of representatives from states that have accepted the MA expansion, and the financial results have been disastrous in most of these cases. There's a couple of states, Ohio, Kentucky, that are right up the bad road, I don't know. Kentucky's facing a $2 billion shortfall, you know, based on what was promised and what's coming. I guess there's a couple of points that I'd like to make, and I made these notes, not reading them. I am reading from my notes, but not from an article. Just so you know out there, so you know what you're voting on, the expansion would enroll 82,000 people currently under that program, because it expands the federal product level, the rates from 100% to 138% of that level. So it's going to push people from private insurance to what is government welfare, another way the taxpayer making that bill. It applies generally only to able-bodied adults. Elderly, blind, disabled, pregnant women, and children are already covered. Medicaid payments are historically a fraction of the provider cost. This is going to kill our local hospitals and medical providers, which are already under tremendous strain. And let's face it, we're a healthcare-centric county, with the Marshfield Clinic as one of the largest providers in the state, and other facilities we have here. It's going to kill them. We're lucky if we can see 50% reimbursements on some of that stuff. Private payer costs are skyrocketing in the states that are taking it. They've seen a 38% increase on average, and some of the counties in our state alone is an 85% increase in cost under the care. So we have one of the lower rates of uninsured people of any state in the country right now. We are a healthcare system that all those states look to, in fact, a number of them are engaged with our legislature right now to find out how we do it, and how to try to unravel what they did. And I guess at the end of the day, and this is where I said nothing's free, and I have asterisks next to this, federal funding is never guaranteed, never, ever guaranteed. The best estimates we have right now is that we would garner about $352 million, and the cost to our healthcare systems and the taxpayers of Wisconsin would be about $600 million. I would never trade $352 million or $352, oh, my own dollars, just dollars, for $600 or $600 million. So I'm opposing this at this point. Opportunities may exist in the future, but as we look at this, like I said, those states that have taken this, many of them are looking to unwind right now and figure out where they are going to. Thank you.
Supervisor Plomo.
Isn't this, Mr. Chairman, your constituency four years ago in Wood County voted in favor of this? Every precinct in the county voted in favor of this Medicare expansion, and now you're telling them your political views on this. They didn't tell you their political views when they hit it, and all the Judicial Legislative Committee doing right now is telling the county's association at their annual conference that the people in Wood County voted on this in a referendum. This is just politics at its best, and I'm not bringing politics to this, nor is the committee. It's just the idea. We're sending a resolution down to the county's association, so at their annual convention, and I know I'm repeating myself, that this is the way Wood County voted. We're not asking legislators to vote any different. We're just telling them what we're doing and our bid in Wood County. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the resolution? Any other discussion? Please vote.
Eight. To go on record in support of enactment of AB 21, a state legislative bill which assists private well owners who have groundwater contamination from nitrates and other sources. Fiscal note: Unknown. Enactment of the proposed legislation requires the local unit of government to match economic assistance provided by the state to property owners in Wood County with contaminated wells.
Is there a second? We have a motion in second on the resolution. Is there any discussion regarding that resolution? Supervisor, act back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It doesn't really explain the fiscal note. We probably have two issues. It just only involved with well testing. It just involved with paying money to replace these wells. I have an issue with making these town chairman, or these town boards paying for private wells if this is the case. It doesn't really help us with the fiscal note. All it says is we're assisting people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Plomo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I don't have any particular problem or argument with this particular resolution. I guess my concern, though, is we have, I hate to call them companion bills, but they're somewhat similar in the fact that they both protect groundwater in Wood County. We have AB 21 and Senate Bill 137, which both are groundwater protection bills aimed at protecting nitrates and other contaminants. Senate Bill 137 is already incorporated in the budget and is supported by both of our local legislators to begin with. AB 21 also has some pretty good points. I guess my concern was that, under the intent synopsis, that we wouldn't go on record supporting both SB 137 and AB 21, and any points from those which are most beneficial to protecting the groundwater in Wood County. This is another one. If the point is, let's not get political, let's not get political. Let's support better quality and quantity groundwater in the state. So I guess if I had my way, and I can't press any buttons, you know, my amendment would be incorporate the other bill. I hate to touch something. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, I guess my question, and I'll direct it to the chairs, why wouldn't we, or should we, incorporate that and possibly get more traction? Because at the end of the day, I think what we're looking to do is request legislators from Wood County and Central Wisconsin General to work together and craft a comprehensive legislation that will protect the citizens.
So are you making a mention, Supervisor Plomo?
I guess I can issue, yeah, is that going to do that verbally, Trent, or do I have to not press a button, then?
I'm just listening for the magic word.
Okay, then I guess I would offer an amendment. I obviously don't have all the wherewithal, so there was some values, but I guess, under the intent synopsis, it would be to go on record supporting those provisions in both SB 137 and maybe 21, which are most beneficial to Wood County in combating contamination of groundwater from nitrates and other sources. The fiscal note probably remains the same unchanged. You could get down to the first where as has all the provisions of one, but I think in a second where, so you could kind of eliminate that, but the second where as, I think you would say the Judicial Legislative Committee has studied both SB 137 and AB 21, and maybe they don't believe this, so maybe I shouldn't say the committee. The board believes it's in the passages of Wood County. To generally support legislation which protects groundwater from all sources of contamination. But then I get to the important part, Nancy, now therefore the result. The Wood County Board of Supervisors hereby resolve to go on record, two, state that it supports enactment of certain provisions of both SB 137 and AB 21, and any efforts to address groundwater contamination from nitrate and other sources that would be most beneficial to residents of Wood County. And number two, to request legislators from Wood County and Central Wisconsin General to work together and craft a comprehensive legislation to address the issue. If you'd like me to provide that to you in writing, Trent, I would.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman. The amendment has been seconded?
Yes, the amendment has motioned. The motion has been seconded. We have a motion and second to amend the resolution. Is there any discussion regarding that amendment? Supervisor Plomo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement with the amendment, and I just want to say why. This is another resolution that's going to the county's association in their annual conference, and we want them to know how Wood County felt because it's been before the SEED Committee many times. As of last Friday, the county's association only supported 137, only supported that, it never supported both of them. Checking this morning, then Lance did this morning, found out that now the county's association is supporting both of them for a considerate. So I'm in agreement with it, I hope it gets down there, and I hope the vote goes.
Supervisor Latham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could have the body look at page 291 in your packet, this was something that I prepared for meetings earlier this month, and my source was the Legislative Reference Bureau. So I've studied both Assembly Bill 21 and Senate Bill 137 extensively, and I mean, from my point of view, and I've been on top of this issue now for five years, Assembly Bill 21 is far.